Just waiting for everybody to be settled. Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. Councilman Vice President, President rather, will not be here today, Lou Valori. I'll be taking over in his place as Council Vice President. My name is Robert Peluso. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:32. Council agenda, Township of Parsippany and Troy Hills, regular Township Council Meeting of May 24th, 2016. Introduction, posting of notice. Loretta, please.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on May 9th, 2016, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on May 11th, 2016, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on May 9th, 2016. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Thank you, Loretta. Flag salute, please. Paul?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mr. Carriffi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Present.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Alan Sandmann, the Chief Municipal Financial Officer Ann Cucci, Township Attorney John Inglisino, and the Township Clerk, Collette Madden. Mr. President, we have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming events, on June 7th, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., we'll have an Agenda Meeting. On June 21st, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., we'll have a regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, did you say, what was the date you said for the June?
June 7th, 2016.
Yeah, correction, that was a mistake. It's supposed to be June 9th, I apologize. So, the meeting is going to be June 9th. It was rescheduled because June 7th is Election Day.
Okay. Please note for the record that we're going to be changing the upcoming meeting dates to June 9th, 2016, at 7:30 p.m. as an Agenda Meeting, and on June 21st, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., a regular meeting. Approval of minutes, we have the regular minutes for April 19th, 2016. Agenda minutes, May 3rd, 2016. Special meeting minutes, May 10th, 2016.
So moved. Grignani.
Have a second.
I'll have a second.
Roll call.
Ms. Carriffi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Motion passes. Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Presentations and reports. Mayor James Barbario.
Yes, we have David White from ADP, who's going to be issuing donations. I'll have to come down with you for a reason. Yes, honored to be here. My name is David White. I'm the Division Vice President at ADP. As you guys know, Parsippany is the host site for two major locations for ADP. We have one across the street at 15 Waterview Boulevard, which is our Division Headquarters. And we also have a building at 99 Jefferson Road, which is the building that I work in, which is the Division Headquarters for our East Service Centers. So, one of our core values at ADP is giving back to the community. Parsippany represents the home of about 1,500 associates at ADP that work here, and we have about 150 that actually live in Parsippany. So, giving back to the community that we work and live, and in efforts of doing that, I have some donations that I'd like to present to the Township of Parsippany. One being, each of these are a $2,000 donation.
Thank you.
First one is the Fire Association for Parsippany. Public Library, $2,000.
There's a library to come up, please.
I'm the money man. Come and get it.
I just have to point out, this was made in the library's Maker Space. This little etching here, see? And it says ADP.
Oh.
And you get to use.
Very nice.
Remind you of us.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Here you go.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. The Volunteer's Fire Squad, Ambulance Squad, I mean.
Yeah, they told me, they actually told me outside.
They were here earlier.
They had an emergency call. PBA, $2,000. And then, last but not least, the, I'm sorry, that was the PBA, and this one is the Police Athletic League. So, total of $10,000 from ADP.
Thank you.
Sure. Oh, okay. Good. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your contributions to the community. Most welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, our Business Administrator, Alan.
I want to thank Collette for making sure we have a microphone that works properly. And, yeah, thank you. A couple of things, as we go through our day-to-day workings and meeting and working with both our workers and employees and volunteers, I want to thank Katie for stepping up when we needed some input on the environmental, because it's important. It's important that she just, she not only talks the talk, she walks the walk, and we appreciate that, and thank you very much. As Councilman Peluso had requested some information, and Justin Lisa, our engineer, did his part, and then the volunteer group did their part. So, we're very lucky to have both workers and volunteers that work together to make sure we meet deadlines that are important for us to meet. Another thing that we handed out today was a draft copy of some of the information as it relates to the budget process that we went through. So, again, and I also want to thank ADP for, you know, taking the time to recognize the good work. In fact, I was talking to the volunteers, the AMPs, and I was saying, I was talking with Councilman DePiero, and I said, "Isn't it great?" I said, "I know what they do," and you can only say you know what they do, but you really don't unless you've been up at 2:00 in the morning after working a hard day and running out and trying to save a life. And so, I got to say to them and to all the folks that are, we're granted this, but in particular, those folks, the police and the PAL folks and the first aiders that, you know, give so much time, and they don't look for any credit, but we should definitely thank them. So, again, we're looking forward to the rest of this coming year to work together on many, many exciting things that were in the budget, and I want to thank the Council for their attention. We did kind of, if you've heard of speed dating, we're doing some speed budgeting there, and everybody was attentive and did ask some real good questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next is our Township Attorney.
My report is relegated to closed session, unless anyone has any questions of me of other items that are on the agenda.
Just want to note for the record, we have a closed session this evening. We have decided to move that to the end of our meeting, so if you would like to stay, you can, but we understand that you work hard, and we appreciate your attendance in the meeting today, so we pushed it to the end, rather than have you sit here 45 minutes to an hour until we reconvene.
But there may or may not be public action taken when you come out of closed session, depending upon
Correct.
what you decide to do in closed session.
Thank you, John. Our Chief Financial Officer, Alan. Ann?
Yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, today we had a meeting with our wellness people. We have wellness coaches that have really made a difference, Gail in particular, for the township and our employees. As part of our self-assurance plan, we have a wellness coach to help people to lower blood pressure, to do all kinds of great things. Well, the results are fantastic, and what we did was, we make, I believe, Collette made some copies for you, to have the results of our review. It has really made a difference for the cost of the town in their medical insurance. It's reduced it. There's definitely a correlation there, and we have many more programs that I'll be reporting on as we go forward. Oh, yeah, I'll just mention a little bit about that our wellness coach over the last six months has reached 219 employees, including the library. And she has many different challenges, such as Weight Loss Challenge, which she's doing now. In those 219 people over the last six months, she's talked to, she's had 1,500 interactions with them. So, they do come here, and she goes to all the locations and meets with them individually. So, I hope the township, we're going to try to get more people involved. Oh, the smoking, oh, yes. There have been seven people who have quit smoking over the last six months, which is huge to me.
Terrific.
Hooray. And we're going to be, going forward, we have a calendar, one of the things we're going to do is a smoking cessation program. That's big, in my heart, close to my heart, love many family members like that.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Our Township Clerk?
No report today.
Thank you. Township Offices, Committees, and Reports?
Yes.
Loretta.
I'd like to mention several things that the, our Parsippany Library will be having and will be celebrating. The library has received from Brooklawn Seniors a $2,000 donation, which will be used for DVDs, for great courses for seniors. Some of the courses will be art, cooking, several others. Yes, they've got many, many. Also, the Hiawatha Library renovation will be going out to bid shortly. They're approximating a year and a half for the development of that project, and when the building is closed, the staff will be going to the main library on Halsey Road. Last but not least, the library will be celebrating 10 years at the location on Halsey Road, and they will be having a gala on November the 4th to celebrate their 10th anniversary. They will be having a speaker, Kimberly McCarrick, and she is the author of Reconstructing Amelia. It is wine, cheese, hors d'oeuvres, and dessert and coffee. Correct? That's, hope, oh, and they are planning for the fee to be for the gala, $30 a person. And I believe you're also possibly thinking of having a silent auction. Okay. Good.
I guess we won't hear it.
It'd be live.
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Loretta. Anybody else have any committee reports? Seeing no other committee reports, go right to bids. Bids taken on 4/21/16, Supply of Bioxide for the wastewater treatment plant, 2/42/2016. FEMA House elevation project, Phase 6, 3/27/2016, reconstruction of Glen Cove Road and Metford Road. Bids to be taken on 5/25/16, 11:00 a.m., reconstruction of Troy Road. On May 26, 2016, 11:00 a.m., reconstruction of sidewalks and curbs at various locations. Quotations proposed and qualifications on April 28, 2016, fireworks display service. Moving to our public hearing, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Motion to open.
Make a motion.
Second, Grignani.
Motion, Councilman Carriffi, second by Loretta Grignani. Roll call.
Mr. Carriffi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Floor is now open to the public.
Anywhere you'd like to come up and discuss anything in public hearing, please feel free to do so now.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record and sign in.
My name is Bob Venedzia. I live at 102 Brooklawn Drive. I'd like to follow up on an issue that I brought up at the April 19th regular council meeting. The issue involved the under-assessment of the Jersey City Reservoir property, which has resulted in Jersey City not paying its fair share of taxes to Parsippany. It's my understanding that Jersey City is treated like any other non-exempt property owner in Parsippany. That is, any property they own should be taxed at a fair market value. However, when compared to a recently published market value of the Atlantic City Water Works, it's clear that the assessed value and the taxes paid on the Jersey City Reservoir are only a small fraction of what they should be. If Atlantic City should go bankrupt, the state of New Jersey has determined that that city's water system has a market value of $100 million. In contrast, the Township of Parsippany values the Jersey City Reservoir, which is more than double the size of Atlantic City, at only $10 million. The Jersey City Reservoir has been under-assessed and under-taxed for decades. In fairness to the resident taxpayers of Parsippany, it's now time for a reassessment. At the April 19th meeting, the Council indicated that it would look into the issue and discuss it with the Township Tax Assessor. I would now like to know the results of your research. Thank you.
Excuse me, are you a certified assessor?
No, I am not.
Do you have an opinion from an assessor?
I have an opinion from the Star Ledger that was printed, and it gave the information to...
Go ahead.
So, I just want to be clear that your basis for asserting that that property is greatly under-assessed is an opinion in the Star Ledger?
No. I'm basing it on a comparison to Atlantic City.
That you've done, the analysis that you've done?
No, the Star Ledger printed.
Okay, so you're basing your entire assertion is based upon
Yes.
an opinion in the Star Ledger about Atlantic City?
It's not an opinion.
What is it, then?
It was, it was an official, you know, they start...
We mean official. The Star Ledger, what would be official?
It was done, you'd have to read the article.
I'm trying to understand the, because you made some very strong allegations, and I'm trying to understand what you have to support those allegations, other than the opinion of the Star Ledger. Is there anything you have, other than the...
The Star Ledger was reporting on the state's valuation of what...
The Star Ledger didn't even opine on Parsippany's...
No, I think, I think what he's done, the state did the, on Atlantic City.
Right.
Atlantic City's twice the size of ours, so...
So, he's extrapolating, in other words, but there's, I'm trying to understand whether or not there's any opinion, professional, journalistic, or otherwise, that you are relying upon to make your rather bold allegation...
You're asking who did that $100 million valuation?
He was here, he asked us to look into that.
Well, he's...
For Parsippany as a comparison.
No, I understand that, but he's done more than that. He's made some very strong allegations about the Jersey City Watershed property being grossly under-assessed, and I'm trying to understand, in fairness, what you're basing that on. And so far, you haven't been able to cite me a source that you can base that rather bold assertion on. So, I'm just asking you, other than what you've read, and you're not an expert, you're not an assessor, but other than what you've read and extrapolated in other parts of the state, is there anything, anything, that you can point to, to support your rather bold conclusion?
Let me interject for a moment. Mr. Inglisino, we have a copy of that article with the Township Clerk?
I just gave him an excerpt.
You have an excerpt?
Of that article.
Okay, if we can kindly review the article and see if there's any footnotes, or there's any documentation on it, you know, we can do that, to see if there's any basis to it, and also...
Well, that doesn't give you any basis with regard to the Jersey City Watershed property.
Well, it could be shared with the Township Tax Assessor for discussion.
The Tax Assessor knows this, you spoke to the Tax Assessor about this, County President, Vice President. He said it's not grossly underestimated. In fact, the assessment is exactly what the assessment's supposed to be.
Yeah.
We can't assess water, and, you know, if you talk, you can, you can call our Tax Assessor up, I'll tell him, and he'll be more than happy to tell you how he comes up with those numbers.
Just, am I correct in saying that the assessment should be at fair market value?
Look, I'm not...
I don't know what the, I don't know what it is.
I'm not, I'm not an assessor, you're not an assessor, and nobody up here is an assessor. So, none of us are qualified to give an opinion.
I'm not asking for a number, I'm asking for general policy.
You're asking for an opinion on what the assessment should be, and what I'm telling you is that nobody up here is qualified to give you that answer, including you. So, I think probably what we should do is, the mayor has indicated that they have, the administration has gone back to the assessor, and the assessor has relooked at it, and the assessor has said in his opinion that the property is appropriately assessed. Now, I can tell you that Parsippany's assessor is terrific. We have numerous tax appeals that are filed in this town, challenging assessments every year. This year, we have, I think, like 72 tax appeals that have been filed, which is an uptick. You don't hear about, you know, trials going on in tax court, because Mr. Cassees does an excellent job in assessing properties. That's not to say the appeals won't be filed, in fact, but he's done an excellent job, and I can tell you that in the industry, he's one of the most respected assessors in this part of the state. Widely looked to by other assessors, very, very valued. So, with all respect, for you to come up here without any qualifications whatsoever, without any support from any qualified person whatsoever, and offer this rather bold criticism of the assessor and his work, which is totally unsubstantiated on your part, you know, frankly, doesn't hold, pardon the pun, it doesn't hold a lot of water.
So, I can't, I can't trust what I'm reading in the newspaper.
Well, I'm...
And it wasn't an editorial, it was a factual article
That doesn't even deal with Parsip...
On Atlantic City.
That doesn't even deal with Parsippany. You don't even have an article that addresses Parsippany. So, I mean, I...
For comparison purposes.
We're out of time right now on this topic, but, you know, what I'd like to say is, I'd like to echo our Township Attorney that we do have a highly qualified tax assessor, Dan Cassees. You are more than welcome as a taxpayer to contact his office. You have an invitation, Bob, from the mayor, to contact him as well, so maybe he can clearly explain it to you and address any further questions that you have. If you're not completely satisfied with that, then you can feel free to give us a call back. But at least they'll give you some answers, and there'll be a discussion on it.
And in the meanwhile, I'll find out who did that assessment. I mean, does it matter who did the assessment on Atlantic City? If it was, if it was, you know, somebody in the state? I mean, it's, they printed it as a liquidation value.
Yes, that's something that you can actually ask in those questions as well. You know, he'll be happy to talk to you. He's highly qualified, and, you know, along those lines, you know, if you're not satisfied with the response, you're more than welcome to come back and let us know how that conversation went as well. But we thank you for bringing it to our attention, though, and for being proactive. You know, we always look for opportunities to increase revenue and to ensure that, you know, we're treating all our residents fairly with levying of taxes. So, please, we encourage you to contact him. You know, we work for you as a taxpayer, so, you know, I welcome you to call him. The mayor also indicated that you can call him as well. Pick his brain, you know, get some information. I think you'll be happy with the discussion with him, and gather some detailed questions as well.
And I'll say this, Bob, believe me, he's one of the fairest and one of the best tax assessors in this county. Not only that, if he could tax them higher legally, he would do it. So, but he knows, he knows the parameters, and nobody knows him any better.
And I think your question basically was, is that nobody has gotten back to you. You did come to council once before and asked the question. So, again, you know, contact Dan Cassees, our tax assessor, he's highly qualified, and if you're not happy with the outcome of the conversation and answering any of your questions, please contact us and let us know.
Okay.
But thank you, Bob. I appreciate your time. Hi, welcome.
Well, thank you. Mary Przycki, 273 Marcella Road. First, I'd like to have a comment. I'd like to say thank you to the Mayor's Action Center. We had a problem with the corner of Marcella and Alockway. It was a hazard with the trees, and we were working two years with the police department trying to get it fixed, and I have to say, I called Michelle because someone almost got, a pedestrian really almost got hit by a car really bad. And in two weeks today, the trees came down. Now the concerns. Can't leave without the concerns. But, okay, what was it now? I think it's two and a half years ago, the DOT went to fix the 28780 entrance to, down there eastbound, and on top of Littleton Road and Kingston Road, it became their staging area. Now, when we, and I think the mayor attended the meeting, they had said, when they completed their project, they would restore that area to basically what it was and planted a lot of trees. Well, now they planted a lot of cement highway dividers instead, and that is one heck of an eyesore. You know, I think there, it was their intention to do it, and it seems like they're not doing. So, I kind of hope somebody would look into that.
I'll give them a call. I'll call Debbie Hur.
Yeah, by the way, that improvement is not an improvement. Now the traffic backs up like two miles instead of, and getting onto that highway. And the other thing of it is, is since development is going to occur on Cherry Hill Road, I believe, you know, there's going to be, what, 800 more cars when UPS does its thing, and then you've got the Waterview, and then you've got CVS, and the signs that are up there are, should be reassessed, because when you're going 202 north, and that big sign says Route 80, exit only west, there is, people jam on their brakes because they don't know how to get to Cherry Hill Road, and they don't know how to get to 46, because there's no signage that says on the top, and that's accident-prone there. That whole area, because of the fact that you are going to get a lot of traffic there, should be studied and improvements made. You're going back 40 miles an hour again. Ooh, it's like, give me a break. But anyhow, all right, my last one is the fact that on Allentown Road, there is a residence that runs a garbage dump, to put it mildly. Now, I understand that the building maintenance people were there, and it does no good. He stacks junk from the beginning of his store step right to the road. Okay, solved that problem, he bought a used truck. Now he puts it all on the truck, it's on the side of the house. It is not appropriate for residential area. We're talking about, that junk is washing machines, refrigerators, pipes, you name it, it's there. So, I'm kind of hoping, maybe I'll call the hotline.
Mayor, we've been dealing with this one piece of property for a while now, and we're getting very aggressive now, a lot more, but we don't control the courts and the decisions that they make. I know he has till June 30th to clean up the property.
Thank God. Well, he always has till June 7th.
I know, and it's a problem.
Yeah, it doesn't bother him.
Mayor, do you have any further questions?
Yeah, one more, one more.
Okay, because we're taking up your time by speaking.
Sorry, oh, that's okay.
That's okay.
I'm going to be fast. Okay, about a month ago maybe, or so, my favorite pet
Thirty seconds.
thing is course forchpod. Okay, now, I remember they said that you were doing a meeting, it was progressing, so I still hope that it is moving along in a positive direction.
We're going to be discussing that in closed session.
Oh, thank you very much.
You may want to stay until the very end.
It depends how late, I'm too old. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate that. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, Michelle Gaynor, 2 Elkhorn. I'm here as the only person that can make it tonight for Druid Hill Community, and I believe the mayor knows about our plight to have two stone brick entrance signs that are crumbling, deteriorated, have now made our community look very, I think, unsightly, and we're embarrassed. So, we canvassed our community, we had over 80, oh, close to 90 families that have all pledged to donate money to help our group fix these two signs, only to have one neighbor whose sign is, whose property is partially, the sign is partially on her property and partially in the right of way, say no. So, we have spoke to engineering, housing, zoning, the mayor's office, police were out there. This has been ongoing since September. I know the town was... I know the town was trying to help, we've now been told they can't do anything. They kind of just wiped their hands of it, saying, we as a community have to get this, either the family that has this one property to repair it or take it down, but they just refuse to do anything right now at this point. So, it's one last plea to say, what can we do? We feel our community is suffering, we don't like how it looks, we can't repair this sign, yet kids go back and forth to school, they sit on the sign, I went up to the bricks, I've touched the bricks, they can crumble, they're scattered all over the ground, so I guess we just, we need to know what we can do. As far as, you know, we spoke to as many people as we can, we don't know what to do at this point.
I know Justin Marquette has been handling this, but the issue with the sign, and you know, are the fact that there's no ownership to the town on the signs. I think they were built approximately forty years ago or so. One of the problems, as Ms. Gaynor stated, is that the one sign, a lot of that sign is on private property. We can't go on private property. The other part of it is on the right of way. I do know, and I spoke to Justin Leesa today, he's going to try to come up if there's an answer on the right of way where, since it's been that way for forty years, you would be pretty much exempt, I have to get the answer from him. Exempt meaning that you could maintain it in the right of way, because it's been that way for so long. Problem is, you have a homeowner that you need that person's permission to even do anything. There's nothing that we could do as a town. Now, the other side, which is, you have a homeowner who-
We have great permission to repair it.
That, you know, there's not an issue with it. Still, the issue is the right of way. And when I get that answer, a clearer definition of what you can and can't do, you might be able to do one side-
Okay.
Until you can either convince the homeowner that-
Perhaps go to housing and zoning and get a violation issued?
Well, here's the problem. It's not, then, I don't know if there is a violation issue for that person because who owns it? They don't own it, they just bought the house, and it was there.
Right, unless it says it in a deed.
And that's what, that's what's going to come down to ownership.
Why can't, I don't know what the measurements are, but if that sign is already crumbling, it has to be rebuilt completely. Why can't it be rebuilt completely on the right of way and on that person's property?
Who will pay for that?
Of course, you have to want that person's property to take the sign down.
To take it down.
All right.
But you can build a new one, you can build a new one completely on the right of way.
Well, here's why. Now, you're getting to today, you're getting to today's laws. Once you take that down, and then you put it on the right of way, the whole entire thing, it can't go on the right of way.
We can give him permission to do that.
I don't know if we can.
The council, do you have permission to do that?
Yeah.
We could, provided it's not in line of sight.
You know, I just, we don't, even if the one sign goes, we don't, we just want it fixed.
The biggest issue with that one sign is that the neighbor doesn't like when people sit on it, you know, from what I understand. People are sitting on it when they're walking, it's like, it's becoming where they could just, and now you're on the person's property. So, but we are, I mean, the right of way issue, we're going to try, and you'd have to get a variance, like, you're right, Mike, you have to go get a variance to get the approval on the right of way.
Well, I have a couple thoughts that I want to share with the administration on how the town might be assistance.
Okay, and I would think at some point, if it comes to, if it's gotten that bad, if they just want to take it down, that's fine, it's just either fix it or take it down.
Here's what you're completely right about. It's dilapidated.
Yeah.
And it needs, it does, either need to be repaired or fixed. And then, what's going to happen is housing will come and force somebody to fix it, because it becomes a public hazard since it's in the right of way.
Right.
So, and when I speak to the township attorney, I'll, we'll contact you.
Just something concrete, once and for all, that we can just move on or-
I understand. No, listen, it's a segue right into your, into the area there, I get that.
I've lived in Rickland Village for fifty-one years, and I've always been jealous of your sign. Had a sign that tell you where your location was. Rickland Village has no sign. So unless you've lived in it for fifty years, you don't know where Rickland Village is. I've been jealous of your sign.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your concerns. Mayor, I just wanted to ask a question. Do you know if Mr. Leesa actually looked at the original planning board minutes when the complex or the development was approved, and also what the deed looks like for that particular structure?
No, I have to ask him that, maybe he did or didn't, I'll ask him though.
It may, it may give us some insight as to how to move forward.
He pretty much, I mean, he pretty much knows the history of it, other than the fact that, he can opine on the right of way issue, but on the private property issue, it becomes, you know, we can't even go on the property if we wanted to.
True, it's private property. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's ask, you know, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Jerry Manning, Rainbow Lakes. I just want to comment on a few items that are brought before the board in the past couple of months that make no sense. The last one was brought up just now about the water, about the reservoir, comparing apples and oranges. You're talking about a big pond up on Route 46, taking up roughly ten acres, against a total water system. It doesn't work. We've got, as the mayor said, and the attorney said, we've got about ten acres of land at ten million. That's a million an acre.
It's a house base.
Okay? It's not a whole water system, it's a pond. That's all it is. Then we've had another fellow who comes up here at least every meeting, has been missing lately, talking about our water system and how it's deteriorating, and that we're going to run out of water. Well, I guess my, my comment about that is, you need to look at a globe of this earth that we all live on and share. It's covered by two-thirds water. Two-thirds of the planet is water. We're never going to run out of water. And if it's a matter of because it's salt, how do you think Saudi Arabia grows grapes? They pump it out of the ocean, desalinate it, and grow grapes, and figs, and dates. Hello, we're never going to run out of water. Then we had some other comments about new sidewalks. Well, my comment about that, the way I feel, I moved to the suburbs because I'm not crazy about sidewalks. Sidewalks generate passive movement, which leads to crime. Without sidewalks, you don't have people walking up and down your street. If you want sidewalks, and there are people who like sidewalks, you can go to Jersey City, Hoboken, Newark, there's a lot of sidewalks there, and there's also a lot of crime. And the other one has to do with the finding of lead, trace lead, in water in some of the buildings, mainly here in the school district. Well, the lead is not in the water supply, the lead is in the service line that goes from the main, to the source. Now, I learned a long time ago, but I was about this big, before you drink the water, turn the faucet, and let it run for about, count to five. By that time, the lead is gone. The lead only accumulates in standing water. So if it's standing in your service feed, it's gaining a little trace lead. If you let it run for five seconds, that's gone, and now you've got pure water, not a big deal. So to put a filter in is not going to help. It's only going to be an expense that's unnecessary. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Is there any comments from the council or the administration? No. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to come up? I'd just like to-
May I say something?
Yes.
About the last, I worked for the water authority for fourteen years, and this gentleman's right about that water system. When you're looking at Atlantic City, you're talking not only just their system, but all of the pipes, all of the pumping stations, all of that, and they have all the windmills and the, and all the power grids and everything else that goes with that. That's why it's important that we do look at the whole system, and I thank you for saying that.
Thank you. Before we close the public session, I'd just like to acknowledge our fire chief is here, walked in. I'd like to just say hello. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
ADP was here earlier.
I have you checked.
Would you like to come up and say a couple of words?
I just got a phone call, and I-
We would be remiss if we didn't invite you up to say a couple of words, and thank you for your service of all of our volunteers.
Thank you, thank you very much.
My name is Pat Gallagher, I'm past chief and president of our association, and actually, we had a plaque for ADP to present to them.
We can get it to them.
Well, I'm sure we could probably-
That's for you.
We could probably hook up with them.
Absolutely.
Does she do your payroll? I'm looking. That's it, right?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public session.
Make a motion to close.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing, Councilman Karifi making a motion.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Ordinance, second reading of public hearing, ordinance number 2016 colon 08, Michael.
An ordinance of the township of Porcypany Troy Hills authorizes execution pending no release, but the caretaker of what non-guarantorance. A notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the town, took the second Troy Hill, the record, for the second, 2016. This ordinance was carried from April 19, 2016, regular meeting. Motion to accept the order, 2016, be heard in the second and final reading by title only.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Public hearing, 2016 colon 08, motion to open the public hearing for ordinance-
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Hearing no public comment, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2016 colon 08.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading, and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage to said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Councilman DePiero, second by Councilman Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution passes.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2016 colon 09, Ms. Grignani, Councilwoman.
An ordinance of the township of Porcypany Troy Hills, County of Morris, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapters 180, Food Establishments Retail, 296, Peddling and Soliciting, and A445, Fees, Compilation of the Code of the Township of Porcypany Troy Hills. The notice for this ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Porcypany Troy Hills, on April 22, 2016. This ordinance was carried from the April 19, 2016 meeting. Motion to accept the ordinance, 2016 colon 09, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Public hearing, 2016 colon 09, motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Seeing nobody from the public, motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Karifi?
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in the title, on second reading, and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the paper according to law. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution passes.
This is the ordinance.
Oh, well, yeah, but it's a-
That's a question.
Okay. Ordinance number 2016 colon 10, Councilman Karifi.
An ordinance of the township of Porcypany Troy Hills, County of Morris, New Jersey, amending, creating, and supplementing Sections 145-5, Entertainment Establishments, 381-5, Tourist Accommodations, 95-3, Auctions, 372-8, Taxi Cabs and Limousines, 296-3, Canvassers, Solicitors, and Mobile Vendors, 275-8, Outdoor Eating Establishments, 83-3, Alcoholic Beverages, and A445, Fees, Compilation of the Code of the Township of Porcypany Troy Hills. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Porcypany Troy Hills, on April 22, 2016. This ordinance was carried from the April 19, 2016, regular meeting. Motion to accept the ordinance, 2016 colon 10, be heard in second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second by Grignani.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Public hearing, 2016, colon 10.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Motion to close public hearing for ordinance 2016 colon 10.
Make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading, and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution made by myself.
Second by Grignani.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Motion to approve passes.
Mr. Council President, I don't want to upset the rhythm of the council here, which is, which is very good, but I did want to give kudos to your clerk, who was really the one who suggested ordinance 2016 10 in terms of modernizing fees for the clerk's office, and that was, that was his catch and his initiation, and just wanted to make sure[1609.01] wanted to make sure that, uh, that that was given due recognition.
Yes, was so noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2016:11, Mr. DePiero.
An ordinance of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, county of Morris, New Jersey, amending and supplementing section 326, sewage disposal systems, individual, and A445 fees compilation of the code of the township of Precipity Troy Hills. Notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township, Precipity Troy Hills, on April 22, 2016. This ordinance was carried from April 19, 2016, regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2016:11, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes. Public hearing, 2016:11, motion to open a public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second, Grignani.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes. Motion to close public hearing, if there's nobody?
Make a motion.
Second, Grignani.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes. Motion to close public hearing, if there's nobody?
Make a motion.
Second, Grignani.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes. Ordinance number 2016:13, Councilwoman Loretta Grignani, please.
An ordinance of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, county of Morris, state of New Jersey, amending chapter 430, zoning, article 102039, administration and enforcement of the code of the township of Precipity Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on May 24, 2016, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on June 21, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning this ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance.
That's actually incorrect.
This ordinance should be for second reading.
It should be for second reading.
Yeah, 2016:13 was, was previously introduced, this is for second reading. This is the ordinance that allows the zoning officer to enforce conditions of approval with respect to approvals given by the boards, and it's a recommendation that has come from your municipal judge.
Okay, so I'll, um, I'll take it. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read this one, okay? So the notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, on April 22, 2016. The ordinance was introduced on April 19, regular meeting. Motion to accept the 2016:13 ordinance.
Second, Grignani.
No, you need to make, make the motion.
Make a motion, Grignani.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Okay, now, uh, public hearing on...
Make a motion, open up a public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Seeing no one coming up, we'll make a motion to close.
Make a motion to close.
Second.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on this, on the second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second, Grignani.
Mr. Carrifey? So there's a motion by Ms. Grignani and a second by Mr. DePiero?
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to approve the resolution passes.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance 2016:14, an ordinance of the township of Precipity Troy Hills, county of Morris, state of New Jersey, repealing ordinances 90:31 and 99:18, and authorizing the sale of leasehold interest in and to block 498, lot 23, block 136, lot 365, block 15.08, lot 35.01, and block 736.01, lot 3, and changing the minimum bid structure therefore. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on May 24, 2016, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on June 21, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution made by myself.
Second, Grignani.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifey?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
And this, Mr. Council President, is, is updating the lease T-Mobile has on a water tower, it'll increase the rent, um, it'll add to security of, of the water tower, and also the escalation will be tied to a certain percentage as opposed to CPI, since CPI doesn't really give you very much these days. Overall, a much better deal for the township and add security to township resources.
Thank you. Councilman DePiero, ordinance 2016:15.
I'm gonna offer this, but I'm going to raise an objection, I've, um, I've committed to counsel about approving this. So I'll introduce it first and then we'll have our discussion. An order to the township of Precipity Troy Hills and the county of Morris, New Jersey, establishing a self-insurance plan and fund for employee own benefits and free, a board of fund commissioners as required by law. We have resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on May 24, 2016, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on June 21, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of instruction here and the notice of the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Discussion?
Yeah, I can give you a little backdrop on this if you want.
Please.
Before, before discussion, we just need a second on that motion.
Oh, you need a second.
Second.
You need a second on the motion.
Grignani?
Okay.
May we have discussion?
Now discussion.
Discussion.
All right, the, the backdrop on this is that prior to, uh, you know, 2014, uh, the town was self-insured and it, it, there wasn't a fund. Uh, when a town is self-insured, it basically has two choices. Number one is, it can be a line item in the budget, but then it has to be treated like a line item, a line item in the budget. The second is, you can have a fund. If you have a fund, then you have to have commissioners and you have to have this ordinance. Problem is, is that prior to 2014, the then township CFO, um, had it, it was as a line item, but she was managing it like a fund, and so that was...
She was designated as the commissioner.
No, there was, no, she was not.
She was not.
That's, that's the problem. She was not designated as the commissioner.
What I would prefer to do in this case is...
Well, you have to, there's, there's a law, the laws specify the ordinance that you have to, you have to create, and what happened was, is that those past practices, which were not proper and not in accordance with the law, were noted, uh, by the auditor as a note, and then what happened was, you know, that then goes down to DCA, and, um, Ms. Cucci can speak to this, but I know that she attempted, uh, to discuss this with, with DCA and avoid what you're doing here tonight, and to treat, um, this as a line item as opposed to treating it like a fund. But because the past practice was so pervasive, that DCA said, "No, we're not going to permit Precipity to do that," and so this ordinance, which I don't think is the, uh, is the choice of the administration, is something that is being, uh, thrust upon you, not by administration, but by the DCA. And so the reason why this is on the agenda and the reason why we have this ordinance is really at the direction of DCA. I would ask Ms. Cucci to either supplement or correct me if I have any of the, of the facts incorrect.
I have, I have a question. Um, in section two, establishment of fund commission, it says here that our township business administrator and the township chief financial officer and one official of the township and a secretary of the commission to be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the township council. These are the people that will be on the commission?
Yeah, so the way this is set up is that you have three commissioners and a secretary, that's set up by statute. Two of the three, um, what we have decided to do, which is discretionary, is to make them ex officio members. Um, similar, quite frankly, to the way the county runs it, is you have ex officio members. You want your CFOs managing the fund, I think, to be...
Yes.
The, the commissioner. Most funds have the business administrator as a commissioner. It's unpaid, it's internal, it's an administrative function. The third commissioner, i- if you wanted to have a member of the governing body to do that, if they wanted to do it, you could do that, if you wanted to have another member of the administration, it's really, you know, but it's a mayor appointment with advice and consent of, of, of the council, and you have to have a secretary who would take minutes. Um, and that, again, is an administrative, uh, task and, and function. Um, but the way this is, is set up is, is, is the way the statute provides, so we, we don't have a lot of discretion. You do on the appointments, but again, this is an administrative function, it's a professional function, uh, it's, it's something that I think should be handled by the CFO, um, and, and the administration. If you wanted to have one member of the governing body on that commission as oversight, you can, but, you know, again, it's, it's, it's not a policy matter, it's not a discretionary function, and you're, you're kind of subject to internal meeting constraints, which are gonna be during business hours, um, and there really isn't much, much to do. It's really the CFO who's, who's running the show.
Mr. Inglesino, um, do we have an option, uh, instead of forming a commission, that we can assign a commissioner? Um, I believe Ruby was at one time a commissioner at...
She wasn't, I mean, that's just not true. There's no ordinance, there's no ordinance that establishes a fund on your books. In order for her to be a commissioner, there would have had to have been an ordinance that established a fund. There is no such ordinance in Precipity, and therefore she, if she was a commissioner, she was a self-appointed commissioner without an ordinance.
Okay, so we, we took...
She was acting, she was acting de facto as a commissioner.
De facto, yes.
As the commissioner, but she wasn't, and that's the problem that DCA had, because DCA is saying, you, you can't be a mixture of both, uh, methodologies. If, if it's a line item, it's a budget, it's a line item and budget, but then you can't invest the fund and you can't do the things with funds that commissioners would do to oversee it, which by the way, are also, you know, heavily regulated, which is why the CFO should be the one, you know, doing it, um, there's no issue with that.
Mr. Inglesino, um, in looking at the, the audit for corrective action of 2004, uh, it was noted as a recommendation that, um, there's legislation that was pending, both in the senate and assembly, which authorized a local unit to appoint an insurance fund commissioners or, as chief financial officer, or a municipal clerk to oversee the insurance fund. Um, do you know if that was approved, because I...
2004?
2004 was noted as an audit exception.
I, I, I don't know. What I can, what I can tell you is, and Ms. Cucci has had the direct conversations with DCA, she's nodding her head in the affirmative, so I, I take it from that that everything I've said is accurate, so all I can tell you is, is that I don't know whether that bill was ever, uh, approved back in 2004, but what I can tell you is, there is no ordinance that was ever passed in Precipity that we can find.
No.
Uh, that, that establishes a fund or a commissioner or anything else, and what the laws are today in 2000...
What year are we in?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, um, which is twelve year, twelve years later. Twelve years later is, uh, is, is, is the way we've laid it out.
Yeah, and just to confirm there is...
Can I, can I speak for a minute, maybe?
Sure, go ahead.
Because I have, um, your, this is about a self-insurance fund, which was not here back in those days, in four, in 2004, I'll just say that. What happens is that we tried to get a dedication by rider, what that means is that we put the money in trust, okay? It stays there, it's dedicated strictly for insurance. Well, that's what we, Ruby tried to do, at the same time managing it like a fund. It's against the law to do, to just spend the money without that fund that's established. We're talking a lot of money. So when I spoke to the DCA, was a comment on your auditor, okay? Made a comment last year and is basically making us do this or else we're going to have another comment. The good news about doing something like this is it puts the money aside for insurance for the rainy day, I think we spoke about this a lot, and there it sits, and it's strictly for your self-insurance. You know what happened this year with the self-insurance program? We've been talking about it a lot in our budget meetings. So in order to do the dedication by rider, we have to establish a fund first, and this is what John is speaking to, and in that fund, I'm part of the management, administration's part of the management, and your choice, I guess, of another person.
Mayor's choice.
Mayor's choice.
So I, just, Mr. Inglesino, uh, in, in discussing this, am I fair to say that we do not have any commissions currently in the township of Precipity Troy Hills?
You don't have, you don't have insurance commission?
We have no commissions at all.
Well, I, I don't know.
In our township.
I don't understand the...
We have committees, but we do not have commissions, which are independent, authoritative bodies.
Um, well, your sewer is, uh, is a separate, is a utility, but it's not a separate...
So we are part of the insurance JIF, which is...
Well, commission's not a term, it would be agency. Agency's a term, not commission.
The JIF is a commission.
The commission, yeah, the...
The JIF is a commission that we belong to, but we don't have...
Well, you belong to that, but that's not solely Precipity.
Right.
I mean, usually in, in the towns, it would be, it would be utilities that would be parsed out, and in Precipities, they're, they're not, in Precipities not, and you don't have a housing authority.
Right.
Um, I, I can't think of any, is the answer.
Okay. I did reach out to our township auditor to ask him about, uh, the finding back in 2004, to see if there was an option where we can, uh, dedication by rider for the self-insurance trust fund, uh, and, and trust our chief financial officer to be that, uh, person rather than a commission. Um, he did not have the answer to that question, and it was okay with him, uh, that if we decide to table it this evening, he would actually come down to us.
He's the one who wrote, he's the one who wrote the comment that...
I spoke to him as, as of today.
I have a comment written here, and we're going crazy for the last six months trying to make this happen because of him.
Maybe your auditors should get on board with the township.
I mean, because he, this is his recommendation, I sat with him and I talked to him prior.
To, to be honest with you, in fairness, we did bring this up at the finance committee meeting, and, and he did say we needed a commissioner, but the, the layout wasn't there, and he was questioned on the layout, can we have a commissioner, or do we have to establish a commission? He was not able to answer that question as of today, and he said that he wanted to further research it and get back to us. So in, in fairness, to make an educated decision to address Councilman DePiero's, uh, concerns, uh, we're not saying not approving it.
I, I just tried to get a dedication by rider and they refused it, DCA refused it.
Well...
The state refused a plain dedication by rider without a commission, I, I'm not sure.
Without a commission.
Yes, and that's, that's the problem.
And this is what the law provides with respect to a commission.
I mean, I would prefer, listen, I'm all for dedication by rider without a commission, but this state will not allow it from my, you know, from my asking them, from, there was a provided...
So to answer the councilman's concerns, uh, Councilman DePiero, would it be fair that...
I have not had a chance to even express my concerns yet.
Okay. So would you like to further express your concerns?
I don't like the word commission. I've been doing it for 33 years. Commissioners are electronics. Um, I, I see no reason why we could not, by ordinance, establish an ordinance that, that names our CFO as our commissioner, period, and not have it an entire bureaucracy, another entire commission.
I, I don't, I don't believe the law...
I believe it can be done.
Let, let me take a look at it.
Okay, so...
I'll take a look at it, because I, I don't think this is something that we wanted to do anyway.
We're talking about designating by ordinance...
By ordinance.
Designating our CFO as the commissioner.
I'll, I'll take a look at it and see if that's, if that's permissible.
We would prefer that.
Make a motion to table it.
So I'd like to make a motion to table it?
Make a motion to table it.
Second, Grignani.
Agreed.
Okay, second, Grignani, roll call.
Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, matter is tabled until the next, we're gonna do it for the next agenda meeting then.
Next agenda meeting, which is dated?
Uh, June 9th.
June 9th.
Yes.
Thank you.
A non-consent agenda resolution, R. 2016-109. Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills granting a major soil moving permit to Robert and Julia Peterson, 25 old Precipity Road, Lot 392.1, Lot 2. Motion to approve the resolution made by myself.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2016-110.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills granting a major soil moving per- permit to Budget Inn slash Super 8 Motel, 1479 Route 46, Block